Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing for the invocation will be offered by Pastor Nathan Abate, representing Cavalry Chapel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
King David in Psalm 33, he shares the blessedness of those whose God is the Lord. And so I want to just ask for the Lord's blessing upon this meeting, as I think one of the blessings is, of course, that He who made us all, and He has all wisdom, to call in His name for that wisdom. So I want to pray for that now. So Father, we come to You in the name of Your Son Jesus. We ask for Your blessing upon this meeting. I thank You for these men and women who serve as our city council. May You grant them the understanding, discernment, and the wisdom that they need to decide the matters at hand today. Lord, we just thank You, Lord, for our city here, and the blessings we enjoy here. Lord, may You continue to multiply them. And again, we just thank You for the men and women who serve throughout, whether it be the police officers, the first responders, and all those who handle the various businesses in our community. Lord, continue to sustain and bless this community. In it's Your name we pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item number three, is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Budget Development Meeting of June 6, 2024, and Work Session of June 13, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for a period of August 1 through 15, 2024. C, Pocatello Arts Council appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jake Knievel to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, replacing Kristen Roberts, whose term expired. Jake's term will begin August 16, 2024, and expire August 16, 2027. D, Pocatello Arts Council reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Cameron Day and Dale Spencer to continue serving as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council. Both terms will begin August 17, 2024, and expire August 17, 2027.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through D in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick, and a second by Mansfield.
Before we vote, can I ask a question? Is Mr. Knievel?
The one that...
...played it?
I don't know. Go to Arts Council meeting and find out. We have a motion by Council President Lurick, and a second by Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
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 Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, so we'll move to Agenda Item Five, is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 5, 5:30 p.m., will be a council clarification meeting. At 6 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. September 12, 9 a.m. will be a city council work session. Other events: August 18, Ross Park Aquatic Center, last day of the season. August 19, 4 p.m. to 7 p.m., Welcome Back Orange and Black event for ISU students in Lookout Point in historic downtown. August 20, 10 a.m., grand opening of the Con Gilmore Pickleball Courts in Lower Ross Park. August 24, annual Portnife River cleanup. From 10 a.m. to noon, meet at the Pacific Recycling Trailhead. Bring work gloves and other tools to help clean the river of trash and debris. Contact the Science and Environment Division for more information. September 2, city offices will be closed for Labor Day. However, garbage and yard waste and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. September 5, 12 p.m., ribbon cutting for the Community Recreation Center expansion at 144 Wilson Avenue. Looking ahead, September 7, Septem Bear Family Fest at Zoo Idaho from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. September 8, Grandparents' Day at Zoo Idaho. Grandparents will receive 50% off admission when accompanied by a paid child. Open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continue. Schools will be starting soon, so please remember to slow down in the school zones. Due to extreme heat, we are experiencing the following city facilities will serve as cooling shelters to those in need. Hours are: City Hall, Thursday and Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Animal Shelter, Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Closed Sundays, and pets are welcome. Marshall Public Library, Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., and they are closed on Sunday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd make a quick comment on August 18, the Ross Park Aquatic Center. That's the last day.
Yes.
But I wanted to thank our staff for the ability to have that last week of the Ross Park Aquatic Center after the pipe burst. A lot of people saw that in the news, but they worked hard to get that fixed really quickly so that we could open back up and have that last week. So I just commend our staff on handling that so well.
They did a great job, that's for sure. So, yes, thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, is a public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding the proposed fiscal year 2025 city budget. I declare the public hearing open.
Mayor, Council, again, Gene Hill, Finance Department. I just need to make a clarification again. Again, as required by the state law, we published a budget in the amount of $163 million, which included the property taxes for $34,117,711 and other revenues for $114,722,766. And it's a really good budget for fiscal year 25. However, in the ordinance that's in your packet, I incorrectly posted or put in $34,352,839, and it should be, again, the 34,117,711. And so, again, very solid packet or budget, excuse me. And I'll work with the mayor to make any small corrections. We'll bring those forward in the amendments throughout the year as needed.
Okay, and the ordinance that is prepared to be read today includes the 34,117,711, right?
Yep.
That's correct?
So, okay, thank you.
Oh, oh, Gene, before you leave, have we received any correspondence from anybody that we have not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move down to the testimony. Any testimony supporting the application? Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Okay, then there's no reason for Gene to come up and explain anything. With that, then, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, council, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, is Airport Grant Offer Acceptance, FAA Airport Improvement Program. Council may wish to approve acceptance of the grant offer from the FAA for the Airport Improvement Program FY24 Annual Entitlement in the amount of $1,014,065, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The grant requires a 6.25% match, which will be funded using state grant funds and previously budgeted airport passenger facility charge, PFC, funds. The project will be funded through the grant. The project to be funded through the grant will be a design and construction of a taxi lane for hangar development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport grant offer acceptance for the FAA Airport Improvement Program, and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven.
Second.
Thank you.
Before we vote...
We have a motion by Cheatham, and a second by Lurick, and a before we vote statement.
Could we ask the airport manager to come up and explain a little bit about what this project is for, where it's going to be, what it's going to do, and when it might happen?
Yeah, Allen Evans, airport manager. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this project here is for future development for hangar. We've been talking a little bit about how we're out of hangar space and needing some new additional land to develop and put those on. This will be in the Speedway area, so this hangar development will need a taxi lane built in to start that process of being able to build. We're still going to need to put some infrastructure and a number of things in there, and it's still pretty preliminary. But until we get the taxiway built, you know, that's the first thing to at least get started with, getting it designed and built.
Do you anticipate this happening during the current fiscal year or next fiscal year?
It will be next fiscal year, yeah. The reason this came, we had already gotten approval for, to have the design. You'd already approved us to have the design, and the FAA came back to us and said, I think they're wanting to clear up some paperwork on their side. And so they said, why don't we include the contract as well, or the entire grant for that full amount? And I think the numbers that we have are going to be good. They can be amended to a certain degree once we bid it, but we feel like we've got good numbers with that, what we've presented.
Good, thank you.
Super. Thank you. So we have a motion by Cheatham, and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, U.S. EPA FY25 Brownfields Job Training Grant Application. Council may wish to approve submission of a grant application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's FY25 Brownfields Job Training Grant for the Southeast Idaho Job Training Program, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $498,750 and requires no city match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Eight, as listed.
Second. We have a motion by Nichols, and a second, a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Bonneville Community Park Downtown Acceptance Request, Parks and Recreation Department. Council may wish to authorize accept and accept a donation from Neighbor Works, Pocatello, and Bonneville Neighborhood Association of the Association of a new playground, benches, ADA-accessible picnic table, and bocce ball court at Bonneville Community Park, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommends approval of the donation request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the, or accept, sorry, authorize and accept the donation from Neighbor Works, Pocatello, and Bonneville Neighborhood Association for the items outlined in Agenda Item Number Nine, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We've got a motion by Lurick, and a second by Cheatham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Rebranding Contract Amendment, Hub Collective LTD. Council may wish to approve an amendment to the contract with Hub Collective LTD, and authorize additional funding in the amount of $11,000 for completion of the project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the amendment, which is within the budgeted amount allocated in the FY2024 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the rebranding contract amendment with Hub Collective, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Ten. Authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick, and a second by Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Bid Acceptance Award for Fire Station Construction Projects, Fire Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the following items regarding construction projects for the fire department. A, award the bid for a bathroom remodel at Fire Station Number One to the responsive bidder Smedley Builders in the amount of $166,829, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the project have been reserved by the fire department for capital improvements in Fund 78.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of Agenda Items both 11A and B, adding the budget authority for change orders of up to 10% for both items of the agenda, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield, and a second by Cheatham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sorry. No, sorry about that. I was just going to say Mangum really wanted that second, and you beat him to it. Sorry, Councilwoman Paulson. Agenda Item Twelve, Fiscal Year 2025 Departmental Fee Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution with exhibits A through Y setting fees for fiscal year 2025, October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. The exhibits are as presented, A through Y.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for adoption of the resolution for the fiscal year 2025 Departmental Fee Resolution. Exhibits A through Y is outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield, and a second by Lurick. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, An Ordnance. An ordinance rezoning approximately 0.18 acres of land located at 864 East Poplar Street from zoning designation residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential commercial professional RCP. Said property being more particularly described as Lot 19 and 20, Block 2, Park Edition to Fairview, Bennett County, Idaho. Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Mansfield.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield, and a second by Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning approximately 0.18 acres of land located at 864 East Poplar Street, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential commercial professional RCP. Said property being more particularly described as Lots 19 and 20, Block 2, Park Edition to Fairview, Bennett County, Idaho, providing for the repeal of all ordinances and conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, B, An Ordnance Approving the Fiscal Year 2025 Appropriations. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Mansfield.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Thirteen, B, be read only by title, and the whole ordinance be published, submitted for publication, and that only, no, excuse me. I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the whole ordinance be submitted for publication. Excuse me.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield, and a second by Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, appropriating $163,947,775 for the 2025 fiscal year to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city, providing for the objects and purposes for which such appropriations are made, and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose. Leveing ad valorem taxes in the amount of $34,117,711 for the fiscal year beginning the first day of October 2024 and ending the 30th day of September 2025, upon all of the taxable property within the city of Pocatello to provide revenue to pay current general liability insurance, street, recreation, cemetery, airport, public library, capital improvement expenses, and to pay interest and principal on general obligation bonds of the city of Pocatello, providing that a certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the county commissioners of Bennett County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, and with the Secretary of State of the state of Idaho, providing for this ordinance to take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
There's some parts of this I don't like, and we've talked about it before. That's the foregone, but I'm going to vote yes.
Lurick?
I'm going to vote yes as well. I feel like we have a very strong budget that I'm very pleased with, and we worked hard to get here, so I'm a yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Thank you to the staff for all of your hard work on this budget. Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I just, I would like to say to the staff also, thank you very much for the hard work. The Council, thank you very much for the hard work. And I don't think very many of us disagree with Councilmember Cheatham with that, but recognizing that there was just really not another choice this year with the foregone. But it is, it's a great budget. The Council, so the public knows, the Council started working on the budget in May, and works through it up until tonight. And it's a lot of work, a lot of extra work, and so thank you very much for all that you've done. It's incredible to be able to work with people as good as what we've got up here on the dais, and with our staff, and the people that represent the city every day. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item 14, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear from, hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The Council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. And as a reminder, there's an allotted time of 15 minutes for this, and three minutes, a maximum of three minutes per speaker. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Harold Armstrong.
Out of time, I would like to talk...
I'm sorry, Harold. Would you state your name?
My name is Harold Armstrong. I'm here about a petition to disallow excessive noise, and I have the petition right here. I can hand it out to you. I don't know how much time I can do this in. Again, historically, from petition, the Blue Heater did not have live bands or auctions over loudspeakers. The Blue Heater is on Bennett Highway. It's a bar and grill. This is why the petition was turned in. Since it was turned in, I was able to talk to the chief police, Captain Dillon. He told me that no permit was issued, and not issued automatically with the liquor license, as I was previously told. Evidently, there was a recent code problem over commercial versus residential designation. It has now been restored as designated residential with grandfather rights to both the Blue Heater as well as the Sandtrap. Someone evidently tried to change this to commercial, a little suspicious with a possible collusion of sorts. Anyway, Corey White, the Sandtrap voter, signed a conditional agreement when he bought the Sandtrap and grill years ago to have outside live music. Evidently, no agreement was signed by Rich Evans for the Blue Heater. Captain Dillon states that his hands are tied rather than enforcing the noise ordinance. Complaints have been called and many times, but nothing has been done. Anyway, this should not be happening in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The live band is basically in backyard of two houses, less than a stone's throw, and I'm sure none of you would tolerate an uninvited band in your backyard for six hours. Also, it's within a short distance from the back door of another house. The bar is surrounded by residential houses and property on three sides. Furthermore, on Saturday, August 3, during the band breaks, an auction was held where the auctioneer used the F-bomb word at least a dozen times over a loudspeaker that could be heard throughout the neighborhood up to a fourth of a mile. This is totally unacceptable, especially with children in adjacent homes. Saturday, August 10, did not include an auction, rather very loud music intrusive to the neighborhood. The Blue Heater should not be allowed to have a live band, auctions, or whatever else over loudspeakers that can be heard throughout the residential neighborhood and beyond. This is a totally unacceptable for a residential environment, not commercially coded. We respectfully want something done about this, which is a public nuisance to our neighborhood and ordinance or whatever. Thank you. I got 28 seconds, and I can pass my original...
You can go ahead, and you can go ahead and just hand them to me, and I'll pass them out both ways. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. That was fast, right? Great job. Great job, Harold. We'll move on to Colleen Armstrong. Let's see if you can be as fast.
Anyway, I, I'm Colleen Armstrong, and I don't have quite so much to say, other than...
By yourself, please.
I'm sorry, Colleen.
Colleen Armstrong.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Other than, we can hear the music quite clearly, even with our doors shut and our windows shut, and we've, we've had to disleave our home several times. So we could be away from that for a period of time, especially when a lot of foul language was used. And as my husband, Harold, mentioned, there are young children in the area, and that's a concern, too. So we just hope this can be considered, you know, what we've said. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
too. So we just hope this can be considered, you know, what we've said. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Linda Hones?
Hi, my name is Linda Hones, and I'm with them. The noise is so bad, and we want to spend our summer evenings sitting on our porch, on our back lawn, and we can't. We have to go in the house, close everything up, turn music or TV or anything on so we can't hear the noise. And there's still the pound, pound, pound from the bass. They're terrible. It's too loud. And someone approached me and said, it depends on who was there first, earliest. Well, my Uncle Yuma and my Aunt Suzie Mirabella had that property in the early 30s. My grandfather built the house next to us in 1936, so apparently we were there first. And we just can't stand the noise. We pay almost $2,000 a year taxes. We have all the traffic, all the big bikers, all the noise, cars honking, the fights, people screaming, and then we have that horrible noise on Saturday nights. We just can't stand it any longer. It's like you want to go postal. You either have to board yourself in the house or leave, go drive around, waste gas, which is expensive. And we're, the whole neighborhood is really tired of it. And I invite everybody out Saturday. They're having another band. You can sit on my porch, go over to Harold's, just sit in your car and roll the windows down and listen to what we have to put up with for six hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll definitely, I'll have our police department affectees, our chief is here and taking notes and doing stuff on it right now. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that followed up on for you. Thank you. So with that, thank you for being here tonight. Council, thank you for all your hard work throughout this budget and stuff, and the staff. Thank you as well. With that, we are adjourned.